Recording, Mayor, thank you.
All right, I want to welcome everyone. This is the city of Cottonwood Heights. It's our city's work session this Tuesday, July 20th. It's actually close to being right on time, 5:00 PM. Again, my name is Mayor Mike Peterson and we have our, two of our council members present, which is Councilor Bruce and Councilor Peterson with an S E N. And we have, I think, our other two council members are joining us.
Christine Sessom.
And Councilmember Michael and Councilmember Bracken are joining us from afar. Yeah, I can, I think, is on a boat somewhere in the Pacific. I don't know. Anyway, welcome, everyone. Well, we have a fairly rapid agenda because we have a closed session at the end to talk about real estate. Therefore, following the agenda, we'll move directly to the presentation by Circles Salt Lake County. Wes Long, who's in charge of client support, would like to give us a brief presentation. So Wes, welcome. I assume you can hear me. Oh, there you are.
Yes. Hello. Thank you.
We're going to turn the time over to you, and you've got about 10 minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for letting me come here today. And I thought I might just give you a brief overview of what we're about. Some of you may have heard about the Circles program. Some of you may not have. So I'll give you just a general overview. Just to start things off, and we were grounded in research that shows that low-income families must have strong social capital and human connections across class lines in order to improve their economic situation. And so our program is designed to empower people to leave poverty situations in their lives and to facilitate systemic change to the barriers that can block a person's stability. Thus, participants in our program forge friendships with each other and build support networks as they work on their personal goals. Those in poverty who enter the Circles program are called Circle Leaders. They set the agenda for our meetings. They make their own goals and they follow through on their action steps. We give them an initial 12-week training to discuss such topics as trauma, finances, healthy communication, and their own life goals. And after that training, they are matched with two allies from middle or upper-income levels. Those allies are there to listen to, learn from, and support their Circle Leaders as intentional friends and will remain by their side for the duration of the program, which typically lasts about 18 months or so, although that can be different for each person. Generally, those who graduate from the program as a Circle Leader, they achieve roughly a 71% increase to their income. Although there is no secret formula by any means, each life is different and the path out of poverty can be long and unpredictable. Whether such a path entails finding safer housing, more reliable transportation, or accessible pathways to a better education or career, it is worth the effort. Overall, though, our aim is to help our Circle Leaders find expanded support networks and to reach 200% above the federal poverty guideline. Circle Leaders have found that they're able to use their gifts and their skills with greater potency, that they're able to be recognized and respected for who they are, and that they can use their voice and their experience to teach the rest of us about the experience of poverty. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with 80 chapters around the United States, Canada. Our chapter here in Salt Lake is still relatively new in comparison to the others in the state. We have locations elsewhere in American Fork, Clearfield, Ogden, Price, Provo, and St. George. We are not a direct services provider, although we do run a little food distribution with cooperation from the food bank. We require that everyone in the program receives a background check prior to being admitted. And since we're not a crisis service provider, those experiencing severe mental illness, addictions, or domestic violence must also be receiving professional treatment. From my estimation, there are three prominent ways in which the city of Cottonwood Heights can be invaluable support to our mission. First, we are always looking for referrals for potential clients. If there are individuals and/or families within the purview and reach of the city of Cottonwood and all the various departments within its government, if there are anyone within those purviews that can, that experience poverty or are struggling financially and would be benefited by our program, we would love to be connected to them. Secondly, we are always looking for potential volunteers. I feel that the people of Cottonwood Heights would have much to offer in this regard, if only they could be reached. And, you know, that's part of our effort. We're constantly trying to reach out for two people and also by word of mouth, by people within our program, by my outreach efforts to individuals, organizations, businesses, governments, things like that. And we feel like there are those within your reach that would be benefited if they knew about it. And, you know, the need for volunteers covers a wide array of things. There are those who can volunteer on a short-term basis for our weekly events or on a long-term basis to operate as an ally. Those that I mentioned before, who would be kind of a long-term friend with our Circle Leaders. We would love to be connected with anyone for that as well. And thirdly, we are building committees called Resource Teams, which consist of at least five or six or so, it can depend on the size of the group, but they entail one of our clients, one of our Circle Leaders, they are in a co-chair role. And they work with members of the community for specific missions, specific tasks. These Resource Teams are dedicated to such things as logistics for our weekly meetings, research into available services in the county, developing working relationships with sites of employment and education, outreach to the community for the purpose of finding other volunteers and clients, and organizing a monthly forum for our Circle Leaders and community leaders to interact and to become better informed on the experience of poverty. Of course, any collaboration that can be had between our organization and the city of Cottonwood Heights would be of great help to us. But just as important is our ability to help you with your objectives with regard to poverty. We would like to know more about that. We would like to be better informed. As well as, as I understand it, according to data USA, roughly 5.3% or so percent of the population of Cottonwood Heights, roughly about 1,800 people or so, a little more than that, are living in poverty, or at least were estimated to be around in the poverty area. We would like to help those people as well as involve those who are not in poverty situations to be involved as well. The whole purpose of a Circle is to gather people together, and we hope to be able to do that for the people of Cottonwood Heights, wherever they are, on the economic ladder, so to speak. But we wanted to just give you this general overview, what we're about, what we hope to do, and if possible, to work in further detail and collaboration with you in the future.
Wes, thank you very much. You know, we have just a couple of minutes. I'd like to give the council opportunity to see if they have any questions. I definitely have a couple of comments, but maybe from the council, any questions, comments?
I've been to a Circles meeting before and it's fantastic. What a really great work.
Thank you. I love the concept. I'm passionate about what you're doing. Are you involved with the county's Community Development Block grant funding? Are you part of that resource pool?
We, we are working with some of the people involved in that program. I think we could do a little bit more. Like I said, we're still relatively new to the area, so we're just kind of establishing ourselves a little bit more.
No, that's good to know because we, we have some funds allocated to us, so we defer to that pool. And we can then communicate with them, our supporters, and things you're doing. What I really like about what you're doing is the mentoring piece of it. I think that's invaluable. I've seen it work in numerous situations, from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, to peer review courts and drug court, to, to wherever we can have peer review and have that dialogue between those volunteers, most people who are experiencing poverty. What a, what a great concept. So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we've, we've been very proud of what it, what it does, what it can offer people. I think it's, it does differ a little bit from a mentor position in the sense that there's nobody who exactly knows what a person in poverty is going through. They're not there to tell them what to do or where to go. They're there to learn, but also to help them, encourage them, offer them support and connections with people that they may know that they should know. And so it is a, it is an interesting twist, so to speak, on the mentor role. It's a little bit different from that, but I feel like it, it does a lot of good, like you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, I applaud the effort. So, thank you. One last request. Would you be able to send us some, maybe what you presented tonight in hard copy? We may look at doing a little article in our newsletter.
Absolutely. I can get some things together and send them right to you.
Yeah, send it over to us. All right. Thank you, Wes. Appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
All right, following on your agenda, we also have with us tonight our good friends, Utah Department of Transportation, and we have Josh Banjura and his supporting staff. So Josh, I know you've got a hard deadline to be out of here by 5:30, correct?
Correct. We're doing our second public hearing tonight. So that's certainly a big deal. That starts at 6:00, and I recognize that the council will be tied up for that, but you can watch the recording from the previous one, and the recording from tonight will most likely be available tomorrow also.
Well, I attended the one at Butler Middle School for an hour or so, and it was outstanding. So I applaud your transparency and the amount of information you shared. So what I would propose tonight, if you're good with this, Josh, is rather than doing the real formal presentation, if you could do a summary pretty quick, and if that doesn't work, tell me. So I'd like to give the council a couple of minutes for a couple of questions before we lose you. Then we'll spend some time dialoguing with staff and preparing some of our thoughts, because I understand we have, and you'll, I'm sure you'll talk about this, we have to watch September 3rd to give comments. But I'll turn it to you. That's right. Go ahead, Josh. We'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. Well, let me share my screen. And I can go through this pretty quickly. Can you see the title slide?
You got it.
Great, great. Project Overview. I think everybody here is familiar with that. I would just remind everybody of a couple of things. The project's purpose is to substantially improve the transportation-related safety, reliability, and mobility on 210 from Fort Union up along Wasatch, up along North Little Cottonwood Road, and then turning east into the canyon proper. And it's estimated that in 2050, the travel time on roughly 50 days a year is going to quadruple from what it is today. Today, it takes about 21 minutes to get from the 7-Eleven up to Alta. And again, it's projected to be roughly 80 to 85 minutes with the growth projections. So that's why we're doing this EIS, right? We recognize there's a problem today. We've been watching it get at, getting worse, and we know it's going to continue to get worse. So how do we solve that 2050 problem? As you're aware, we started with five different alternatives, a enhanced bus with no widening, an enhanced bus with peak period shoulder lanes in the canyon themselves, and then a gondola from the existing park and ride at the mouth of the canyon. And then as part of our November addendum, you know, essentially these last two ideas came out of that comment period that we had last summer. So we added a gondola from Lakai and a cog rail from Lakai. And I think it's important to note that while it says from Lakai, you know, you aren't entering on that brick road, right? This would be entering off of North Little Cottonwood Road, and that's a pretty common point of confusion. I just wanted to clarify. So, gosh, what was it? Back on June 25th, we released the draft, and we identified two prefers. And this is kind of unique for UDOT to do two prefers. But the short answer, the reason we did two is because these two really stood out as meeting the purpose and need the best, but for different components of that purpose and need. So the enhanced bus is the alternative that best meets the mobility goal. And gondola B is the option that best meets the reliability goal. The safety component is actually met equally well by both alternatives because that's really handled by the trailhead parking and avalanche sheds. So that's kind of a wash between the two. So this is really the difference. So, really quick overview, the enhanced bus service in peak period shoulder lanes. This has two mobility hubs, one at the gravel pit, one at 94th and Highland, and a bus would leave each of these every five minutes and travel directly to Snowbird or directly to Alta, meaning if you got on the gravel pit, there wouldn't be bus stops along Wasatch to board the bus. There wouldn't be stops at trailheads. And, you know, the Alta bus wouldn't stop at Snowbird, right? And this is all to expedite service. And that service is currently projected to be 36 minutes. But I wanted to clarify, that includes 12 minutes, really, to pull into the mobility hub, find a spot, grab your gear, walk over to the bus platform. So it's really only 24 minutes on the bus. And I think this is important to note that this is the fastest seat time, right? But it's also a very consistent seat time in that every five minutes. So it reduces that fear of missing the next bus when it comes every five minutes. But also, on certain days, it's likely to be faster than driving your personal vehicle. And what better motivation when you want to go skiing than to see a bus passing you going uphill? So again, that's a really big benefit. Cost-wise, 510 million capital cost and 11 million for operation maintenance. Obviously, the shoulder lanes, you can see kind of a artist's rendition of what the widened road might look like. You know, when buses aren't in them in the summer, or, you know, outside of that kind of 140-day ski season, this is additional benefit to pedestrians and cyclists who frequent the canyon. And let's be honest, right? We know the gondola towers do have the highest visual impact. But you can see there is some visual impact with the road widening. But really increasing that impervious surface or the amount of asphalt does have, you know, potential to increase water quality concerns, but also wildlife habitat, because the road is just wider now. And the one thing I really want to point out about that 36 minutes is that is calculated based on dry pavement time. And, I mean, there's a reason our license plates say best snow on earth, right? We know it snows up the canyon. It snows a lot. But there's no way to model those different snowfall intensities and wind rates and pavement temperatures. So that 36-minute travel time is likely to go up when it's snowing because it's, you know, with the lane, it's subject to accidents or slide-offs or slow-moving vehicles. Gondola, this is gondola B from Lakai. So this is the one with the base station off North Little Cottonwood Road. There would also be parking for roughly 1,500 vehicles at the base station, and then additional parking at the gravel pit and the mobility hub. Travel time is a little bit longer on this. This is 55 or 59 minutes, depending on where you park. So that's, you know, 36 minutes versus 55 minutes, that is an increase of 19 minutes, right? So it is a longer ride for passengers, but it's a much more consistent ride because gondolas are really designed to work in mountainous environments. So we feel like, you know, it should be 55 nearly 100% of the time. Cost-wise, this does have a capital cost of 592 million and an operation maintenance cost of 7.6 million. So the operation and maintenance cost is roughly 3.4 million less per winter. But that capital cost is 82 million higher. So if you look out to 2050 or 30 years, honestly, if you're only looking at winter service, the overall lifecycle costs are very close for these two alternatives. Some of the considerations, it is the second highest cost of the five. We recognize the visual impacts. I mean, this undoubtedly does have the highest visual impacts in the canyon. But it also has lower impacts to wildlife and watershed, also the climbing boulders. And this is really because when you think about it, the only construction in the canyon would be at those 23 tower locations rather than widening the road for the entire eight and change miles of the canyon. So there are much more discreet earth-disturbing activities in the canyon. But they're also 50 to 60, and there's a couple of towers that are at 70 meters tall. The reliability, right? Because it operates in that separate alignment above the roadway, if you have a slow-moving vehicle, a slide-off, or even avalanche debris covering the road, the gondola could still provide that consistent travel time. Now, we're not going to use any of these alternatives during active artillery for avalanche. But again, if debris does hit the road while it's being cleaned up, the gondola could run because of that separate alignment. Alternative commonalities, I want to focus a little bit, well, not a little bit, but mostly on Wasatch here. So, so a couple of things I want to point out. As you know, we had two alternatives. We had the five-lane versus the imbalanced. Ultimately, UDOT did choose the five-lane alternative as the preferred, but, you know, working in all of our meetings with yourself, Mayor, council members, city staff, and also just hearing from citizens of the community, we chose to do a phased approach where we would actually build the imbalanced lane alternative first and preserve that right away for the five-lane alternative if the level of service ever reached level LOSE, which is kind of our threshold value. And the real benefit here is it actually moves the shared-use path on the east side of the road farther away from the traffic lanes, which I think will be a great benefit for users of that shared-use path. I mean, it's in both the imbalanced and the five-lane. But we would build in that five-lane, and that's basically just be more buffer for users. I want to point out that, you know, we are not at final design yet, but I think the, you know, the Wasatch Boulevard aesthetics plan and master plan that shows some of these concepts, you know, planted medians, park strips, paths. You know, that visioning document and exercise will be integrated into the final design of the roadway. Also, another question that we get hit up a lot is the peak period shoulder lane. So on Wasatch, that outside cross-section is really a bike lane and a shoulder, right? A shoulder for if you get, you know, you break down or, you know, flat tire or whatever. But it's also a bike lane, and people are thinking that that is actually the peak period shoulder lane. It's not. It's for queue jumping. So the buses could use this, and essentially when they get stuck at a red light, they could use that shoulder to go to the front of the line where the traffic signal would create a right arrow green to clear the right turn bay, and then the bus could actually skip a bunch of cars and get back in the general-purpose lane at the far side of the intersection. So I want to make sure everybody knew what queue jumping was quickly there. Public comment period, we did just extend it from the original 45 days up to 70 days. So that started back on June 25th and ends on September 3rd. So that is actually the Friday before Labor Day, if that helps you remember when that comment period ends. You can submit comments on our website. You can email us. You can use the phone number, any method. Like I mentioned, we are having our second public hearing tonight. We had the first one last Tuesday over at Butler Middle School. I think it went really well. I was very pleased with the turnout. We're guessing there was probably 350 people there or so, which was fantastic. Lots of good comments, lots of involvement with the community. Moving forward, so again, we do have that 70-day public comment period that's going on. We will get all those comments. We will respond to all of those comments publicly. And honestly, I expect we're going to have to revise the draft based on some of those comments. I mean, that's why we're having a draft comment period is we really want the public's input. So based on getting all those comments, of which we've had about 3,500 so far, we expect to have that all wrapped up and have a final EIS and record of decision in winter 21, 22, which is honestly probably first quarter of '22. So January, March timeframe, if everything goes smoothly. So that is gotta be the fastest I've ever done that presentation.
Well, Josh, thank you. And I know we only got you four minutes, and there's one question I have to ask, and we'll continue to talk. But again, thank you for your transparency for the council and our audience. This is a work session, so those who are online who maybe have raised your hand to speak, we do not do that in this meeting, and hopefully we can ask them those questions on behalf, but other meetings. But Josh, one thing, and you've heard me ask this question before, but, and I know what the answer is going to be, but I think it's, it's good to have it on a record and ask the question. You know, a couple of years ago, when we first worked, started working with your predecessor, we had several meetings talking about speed on Wasatch Boulevard. Now, I understand the EIS does not actually take a position on speed because it's based upon road design, and maybe you could explain to that how, how that works. Then my question with that is can the EIS take a position on design with speed as a desired outcome?
So I think I know, so you're correct. Speed limit is set by UDOT, the greater UDOT, and is controlled by both legislative code and administrative rules. And there is a process for assessing, evaluating, and potentially changing speed, right? So we do have that process, but that is outside of the EIS process. But I think what you're leaning to, or, you know, is can we integrate elements of design that lead to lower speeds, right? And I think what you're talking about is planted medians, park strips, potentially, you know, shortening crossing distances by either having protected space, right? So those are all things that we absolutely will work with Cottonwood Heights city when we get to that final design stage. And we've committed to that. It's in chapter two. I don't know what page it's on. But I know there is a commitment in there to work towards those documents goals.
Thank you for that. And one quick question, I need to give the council an opportunity. One thing you talked about is the cost of implementing the EIS. You know, we're talking over half a billion dollars on, on everything. How, how is tolling going to be implemented with respect to this? Because obviously, whatever the alternative, there needs to be a need to incentivize people to get out of their cars.
Absolutely, absolutely, right? And that's part of the one, what I skipped over, because I wanted to spend a little more time on Wasatch. So tolling is a part of any, and all of the alternatives. So it's anticipated that we would toll roughly 50 days a year in 2050 with the traffic growth, and it's likely to only be told from, oh, you know, 7:30 to 10:30 AM. Because that's really the peak period when we see that congestion. And what we want to do is get some of those people either to And what we want to do is get some of those people either to come up later in the day. Or if they want to be there for first chair, choose to move to one of the transit modes. We are talking about, um. Some preliminary studies showed that tolls could be in the range of twenty to thirty dollars. Um, it would be variable, right? So if we weren't getting the diversion we needed, the toll may be higher than that. If we're getting more adoption than we anticipated, we would lower the toll. Um, but tolling is absolutely on the table for Little Cottonwood. But we also recognize that it would be unfair to toll little without tolling big at the same time.
I I I've taken too much time. I apologize. But we have some other council members. If you got just a second, someone else have important question.
Uh, there's a few. We're concerned about a parking structure, about what that would be and what it'd be look like. Uh, we also are concerned about are the ski resorts go- going to be a a big part of this contribution? And we need to get people across from Wasatch that are against the hill across that road. And I know it was mentioned and we talked about maybe three or four semi fours to get people across because we're isolating everybody east of Wasatch.
Right, so the Wasatch Master Plan does have a couple of crossing bridges. Um, you know, getting the trail up to that proposed location is difficult. Um, and the reason for that is is the Utah Open Land parcel, right? So there there is a little bit of a barrier in how we could traverse that or how we cannot traverse that, I guess. Um, but we would certainly look for opportunities. That people could potentially walk or ride their bike up to the gondola station if that were the alternative chosen.
Just to the gondola, not get across the Cottonwood Heights?
Well, I mean, that's what the. Ped bridges that are shown in the plan are, right?
I see.
Sorry, maybe I don't understand your question.
No, I think I think he's referring to all along Wasatch Boulevard.
Big to little.
Okay.
Right.
Right, so I mean, that trail, the multi-use trail does run from big up to the high T currently. Um, in our plan, but again, it doesn't extend any farther south than the high T. Because there is the open lands parcel. That would, that's kind of blocking the southbound progress there.
So so we have two pedestrian bridges proposed, is that what it is?
That's what's in, shown in Cottonwood Heights Master Plan, correct, I believe. But I I would defer to Mike on that one and probably has a better grasp on that than I do.
All right, I know you gotta go. Uh, we will again work as a council to. Provide a formal response. I know we have uh additional meetings with you personally, so for our audience that uh. Josh has been more than available to allow us to give him input, so we appreciate that and we we plan on taking advantage of that. Josh, I know you gotta go, so thank you once again. Good luck tonight.
Thank you so much and thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to the comments and future discussions. Thank you all.
Thanks, Josh. All right, um, a- a- again, that was a little bit short. Uh, we apologize, but we were lucky to get him during these. Busy presentations that he's providing to constituents. So as as a city, uh, do you want, you, I don't know if you want to introduce it or we as a city. Uh, like any jurisdiction, want to provide formal comments as to our position. By September third, well, before that. And so some discussion tonight, and I don't know, uh, Mike, when you're ready to give us. A summary of kind of, you've reviewed the over a thousand page EIS document, so.
Yeah, mayor, if I may, just, so one of the things, I think it'd be good tonight to have the conversation and and get some of the issues that the council.
Cause I've got.
Want us to look at, um. Mike has been spending a lot of time on his staff. I've been sitting down and talking with them as well. What I propose before we, before the September third deadline. Is that we get your input tonight and even more input as you provide that. And then we come back in a work session with somewhat of a draft of the issues and and comments that we want to make. And then we could get your final authorization to move those forward, but that's in general, the process I see if that works.
I think that's that's excellent and and I'll try and advocate. That same position with CWC and they've been very sensitive because we are ground zero. Both was Lakai as well as Wasatch. So I think we can have some input on CWC as well, so.
I have a quick question. Why would the open lands property have anything to be detrimental to make that work?
Well. It's quite clear, actually.
Well, with a road, I understand. With a with a trail, I I don't know that I fully understand and we probably need to explore that further.
Well, and one of the design concepts, they, what I thought was.
So the the cog rail had a. I understand. Stop and a piece of infrastructure in the piece, but but what I heard. Was they stopped the shared use path at the high T because of the Utah Open Lands piece.
See, that's, that's a trail.
It's it's trail, it's recreation after recreation, many, so I think we can, we can work through that a little more, because I don't think that.
Maybe misunderstood.
Yeah, I don't think that prevents a trail from being developed through there.
Lot of questions.
So just, I I can give just a brief, just our approach leading to our next discussion.
Just one second, council member Michael. Oh yeah, do you have your hand raised?
Oh, yell at us, Christine.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Awesome. Um, I guess my one question, I know Tim, I've been, I'm reaching out and chatting to Tim about trying to get a. Get a meeting with the governor and I I think it's it's fair to say that there hasn't been much interest from the governor's office to meet with us on Wasatch Boulevard. I I see Wasatch Boulevard is sort of the linchpin to a lot of economic development and as it relates to recreation with, I think, five million visitors a year. That visit our canyons. Would it, would one possibility, mayor, be to to extend um an invitation by CWC to the. To the governor and the lieutenant governor to just take a walk or take a drive along the corridor because I I think. If they were to see what it is today and what's being proposed, perhaps that might be a a way to to get them to. Think more about speed limits and medians and and recreation and and tying this all together to to make sort of this like flagship. Gateway.
Um, no, I think that's that's a great suggestion. Tomorrow morning at ten thirty, I have. A a member of the CWC Transportation Committee, I'll make that request tomorrow from the Transportation Committee to move it to the full CWC. They they need to be up here and see it, yeah, yeah. Good suggestion. I'll do that. Uh, again, go go back to Mike Johnson, get up, you know, a little bit of your crusal of the document.
So so just very generally at this point, the the way we're working through it is. Obviously poking, focusing on the elements that directly affect the city and then we'll get, we'll read the whole thing, but really worried about the the local impact. Obviously, UDOT's goal is regional mobility and reliability, but we have that same priority and need from a local level as well. And that's all reflected in the Wasatch Master Plan. So that, our approach will be to review the entire EIS through the lens of the Wasatch Master Plan. Identify uh maybe concerns or issues regardless of the alternative. And then work towards, um, you know, potentially which alternative compares more favorably to the Wasatch Master Plan. And and uh up to the council, obviously, but but trying to focus in on. You know, of the two alternatives, whi- which do we as a city prefer? Uh, or or do we prefer one over the other? Because I think from a public comment standpoint, it it comes across a little more strongly if we if we have one choice over the other and then rationale for our decision.
Yeah, and I think right along with that is also being sensitive from the city's perspective. As to any unintended consequences from either alternative to. Not just Wasatch Boulevard, but specifically even though it's indirectly us, it's Big Cottonwood Canyon. Because of that intersection that's in our city, that's on that corridor. Um.
Yep.
Yeah, and I know we've talked about it, so this is nothing new, so you know, I appreciate. And I tried to advocate that same concept of using Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan as the lens with looking at speed. Not to be a highway, traffic calming measures, shared use path. These are all things within that plan.
Yeah.
And and I've hammered him so much on this.
And he was correct. I I did find the page that talks about aesthetics. It does, it references our.
And so he's, he's starting to at least to reverberate those same comments a little bit and and that's what we need to do and get those across. I think we've had some generalized support of that concept. I'm still trying to understand. You know, we we think about, you know, our residents and save not paving those people about. The lanes and how much paving and stuff like that. We just want to make it clear what our position is.
Right, yeah, so we, you know, I think we'll have some some more major concerns with with things or, um. A- as far as how it complies with the master plan and then even things that we feel are in in the EIS right now. Um, you know, there's some just preliminarily that we feel could be worded more strongly. Uh, more of a commitment, um, uh, you know, longer commitment to to work with you got on aesthetics and design and speeds and that.
One thing I think the council needs to to take a little bit of a hard look at, um. And it's kind of the elephant in the room to a lot of people, um, less so for me because again, my focus is Wasatch Boulevard. Is gondola or enhanced bus? Okay, because um they both have some impact. Um, I'm trying to understand. I would love to jump on a gondola and ride it. So it'd be a fun experience, but it only gets, only stops at two places.
Yeah.
Two resorts.
Two resorts, so that's a little bit of concern for mine. We've become, being a general parts of that practitioner. It's it's all of the recreation that we want to support and so I I'm trying to. Better understand the impacts of the gondola to what I call secondary auxiliary recreation spots and then. Yeah.
And is it either or?
Well.
No hybrid?
Yes, I think Josh, as he stated, that, you know, the the preferred alternative that comes out may. May make some modifications, but but in general, yes, it's either the enhanced bus or the gondola.
He used the term, which is important, remember, it's called record of decision.
Yeah.
Yes, requires at some point they make a record decision, so if they, once they've made that decision. To change and have to go back through the whole process again, right?
There's also scaling to your point, right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, with it, with the rapid bus system, right now we have twenty to thirty days that are truly crunch time. And we could scale to make those days very quickly. The gondola is years out. Um, and the rapid bus could be scaled when we get to twenty fifty and we have fifty crisis days in theory. If we drive the Great Salt Lake, we're not going to have the greatest snow on earth.
Well, I wish we had also, also go ahead, tell us.
So I I lean heavily towards the rapid.
Absolutely, you know, we, I've got some notes on that. We'll, I'm gonna flesh these out a little further, but yeah, there's absolutely flexibility and trade offs and. You know.
The other thing too, I don't know, maybe Samantha can add this with part of your staff is. Is the development of of electric buses. I mean, I look about Park City stuff. And stuff like that, if, because some people say, wow, do you realize how many buses that is and how many vehicles you're still in those canyons and. But having that discussion, I think it'd be helpful, I I. I like that direction too and then how flexible it is, yeah.
Mike, I have a question. We're going all the way up thirty years, right?
Yeah.
Have we got a breakdown of ten years and twenty years? I mean, thirty years is is a pretty good chunk of time.
Yeah, that's um kind of consistent with like the regional transportation plans from Wasatch Front Regional Council. They generally go up thirty years. A- and anticipate traffic levels of service and traffic volumes and that kind of thing. So I I think it's, we have current day data and we have twenty fifty data.
Nothing in between really.
I I will need to double check through the EIS, but I I know I've seen tables that just have twenty fifty on this.
Is Christine waving?
Yeah, Christine, comments? Live?
No, I I'm I'm happy to just listen to discussion. Thank you, Doug, for council member.
Yeah, well, and we'll, we'll have this back on the agenda. This was introduction, get us warmed up. Um, you know, and and of course, council members, if you have questions in between and you want copies of. Some of the documents, we can get them to you. They're interesting, but.
We we meet every other week as as staff and and then monthly with. Uh, mayor and council member Michael with Josh and the EIS team. So if there are questions. Outside or before the next meeting, let us know and we can ask those in that that regular meeting we have with you, Doc.
Again, fundamentally, my vision, if I had one, again, and I've said this so many times, CWC and Josh. We do not want a highway. It's a boulevard and you heard him articulate it. It's got medians which if designed right. And we'll have that process. There's traffic calming perspectives that can impact speed. The shared use path for actual transportation is is paramount to me and that's on the uh west side.
On the east side.
On the east side, yeah, and and some of those amenities, I I think. Now again, depending on the alternative, the transportation hubs, gravel pit. Or ninety-fourth or Lakai, that's.
Yeah, and also critical that we'll be looking at is the the vehicular access by the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Kings Hill Drive and Prospector and on the west side as well. Cars getting in and out of there and sight visibility and that kind of thing is critical as well.
One thing you didn't mention for the council information, I think the snowsheds are in either way.
They're in both.
Which we, at one point we thought one would require, one wouldn't, but there is a way and that's.
And that addresses a lot of the slide off issues he was talking about.
And we really, this is a state road. We're getting the input and we hope that they'll accept some of our input. Is that where we're at?
Well, yeah, and I think they have a, lack of better term, moral obligation to hear it because it impacts us. But but I think it was Christine brought this up, that how you handle Boulevard. Also impacts Wasatch as it goes in front of Jivernay down to Lakai or to ninety-four south. So we want to make sure how how that's impacted as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, now it is our road. Okay.
Do they have any, just any other comments from, I just want to make sure those that were on.
Yeah. I think you're good. Right, Christine, you're okay to move ahead? All right. All right, thank you, everyone.
We'll probably have this on Aug- August seventeenth meeting for sure, because we have to have our comments in by the third.
Mike's been involved all along, so I think he's kind of got a a game plan and we appreciate that game plan and. I'm sure we have, we have some meeting with some constituents between now and then as well, but uh, will give us some input and. All right, uh, real quickly, uh, referring back to your agenda, we have a business meeting that follows tonight. It's really uh fairly light, uh, participation is a crazy month. We have as far as uh. People who have travel requirements, um. Well, welcome pledge, uh, we have acknowledgement of a sergeant's promotion, uh, for Sergeant Es- Etchell. Um, Robbie, that can go tonight again.
Yes, sir.
Okay, citizen comments, um, and then we have one. One action item and that is approval of entry into an agreement with Zions Public Finance. For financial advisor services, that's a change of uh where we've been in the past and uh. You want to introduce that right now briefly, Tim, or?
Yeah, we went through, we went through an RFP process back in March and reached out to see what proposals we would get. Um, we had two proposals come in and we evaluated those through a committee process through criteria. And um, the committee consisted of representatives from our city recorder's office and our finance department. And um, they selected Zions Finance. What they will help us with are a number of things when we need them. Related to bonding, debt structure analysis, um, if we ever go out to bond again, we we will do that and work with them. In the past, we've had Louis Young assist us with some of those things. They would be with the approval of this agreement. This would be the entity that would help us for the near future. So we're recommending approval of the agreement that's been reviewed by our legal counsel, Shane as well.
One action item. Any questions on that? All right, uh, going back to our work session, we have a couple of staff reports, then we're going to a closed session. Uh, first, uh, we have, uh, Suzanne.
Right here.
Okay. All right, let's talk about Butterville days coming up. Uh, yours here, it's your last night, I saw afraid last night.
Yeah, crucial last night. So, um, Monday, um, yesterday we had our car cruise, it was about forty cars, um, we got little, um. We would probably have more if it hadn't rained right before and the car started coming, so some of them just kind of backed out of it. Um, but it's. But it still was fun. It was a it's a fun little little cruise around the city. And tonight, well, this morning, we actually had the Butlerville Day Rocks that turned out quite fun. We actually had people waiting at the parkway. Mike's department was putting them out for whom you may have to come there to go wait.
So explain, explain that what is again.
Oh, okay, so what that is, is the Butlerville Day Rocks is we, the Art Council has painted these rocks. And put a hashtag Butlerville Day Rocks on it, rock on it and. Planning Department has gone out and hid them in the morning. And they will do it again tomorrow morning and then you get to find these rocks. This is kind of a, it's a. Little group that's, a lot of people have been doing it for for quite a few years now. They've got like social media groups and stuff like that. So it's it's kind of a thing out there and we thought it would be fun and the Art Council just loved and loved. We ended up with ninety three painted rocks. So there's about four rocks or so at each park that there's nine different parks listed.
And they're not, they're not just painted, they're there's designs.
Yes, so they get to keep the rock or they can go and hide it again if they want, but they're quite fun and it's. Yeah, they those rocks disappeared really fast this morning and so they're going to do it again.
A little bit better and do it at five in the morning.
So it was kind of a little, just a little fun thing. And then right now, I've got Caroline, our culture coordinator over setting up for Moose Owl's Limber Pine Talk happening at Butler Park. At six thirty and that is the Parks and Trails Committee that is putting that one on. So that's kind of a fun little thing. Tomorrow morning, again, we have the Butlerville Day Rocks that will be hidden. And then tents will be arriving out on the field and nothing tomorrow night. Thursday, we have food booth showing up. The field opens up from five at five o'clock. We'll have food booths six to seven. We have painting in the park. We have a hundred and twenty painters coming out to paint a rooster. We have, it'll be quite interesting and fun to watch it. And at seven fifteen, we have bingo with for Brighton Bank is one of our sponsors. We call Brighton Bank Bingo and we'll start that at seven fifteen. Now, this year's a little different. It's four and older. In the past, we've done from fifteen and older, but this year we brought the the age down a little bit. And we think that will be fun. It's limited seating, so when the seats are gone or when we run out of our bingo cards. But it's one prize per person, so when the bingo cards turned in, we can give it to somebody else. Friday, we move into and we'll have, let me think, one, two, three, four. Fourteen, that's what I thought, fourteen food vendors on the field. I think thirteen on Thursday and the rest of them will be there Friday, Saturday. Friday morning, we start with yoga with yogurt. It's a Trader Joe's sponsorship. Then and that's at seven AM over by the rec center. Four PM is when the park opens up and the stage opens up with some great entertainment. We do have scooter rodeo where it's going to have like some little obstacle course, skateboard scooters. And then some kind of some trip writing and stuff from some professionals inside the park that would be kind of fun. And this is put on by Utah Pro Scooters and they will also handing out some some free swag and prizes and. And have some safety gear and talk about safety. It's a lot is based on safety is what I asked them to do on that one. And then we move into, there'll be boost crafts and businesses, so the booth will be opened up. And then we have the movie in the park, which is the crude's a new age number. This is the second one, so excited for that. Saturday, we have again another Trader Joe's sponsorship for high fitness aerobics first time ever, so it's going to be brought off the stage. We'll have the instructor on the stage, so we'll see how that goes. I had a request from some people on that one. We have the Historic Walking Tour, which is a combination of Parks and Trails and Historic. One of our historic members will be walking along and and then we'll start here at, I can't remember the time. I think nine, eight or nine. And they will do a little bit of a tour and it's guided by one of our historic committee members, Gal. So that will actually be quite fun to, I wish I could go on it, but I can't.
She's a walking encyclopedia.
That one, that one will be very interesting for the people that can make that and would love to hear a little more about the history of Cottonwood Heights.
And great stories. I mean, there's some amazing stories.
So that's a new thing that, and then of course, the parade. Will will start at eleven, old fashioned games will be out on the field, car show entertainment, car show and then stage entertainment. So the park opens up at two PM, except for the aerobics will be at seven, but the the other, the main park will be at two. Okay, the only other question, I can just.
The other highlight is ten PM Saturday night.
Oh, and that is fireworks, the city fireworks.
People are excited, especially with the banning of fireworks in our city. That I think will have a tremendous turnout to enjoy, which is always a highlight. And Riley, any, I mean, again, maybe you can assure us there's a process for those.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll make sure that. Okay, we haven't had any problems to this point and then it's allowed for how we did the the restrictions this year, so. We're just supporting that. The only only thing I can see during the wrenches weather, which we have.
Well, we appreciate, you know, Riley, you and Robbie both for at least on the fourth and through the twenty fourth with. The the drought conditions and the fire danger for both of you. I I I've produced a good report. You had UFA meeting this morning and. Good reports across the east side of the valley as to our 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 citizens self policing and. Been pretty good, so to speak. We've not a lot of complaints, but part of that is just the information's been shared in both. Both departments being proactive and communicating there. The only other thing, Ann, is that can I assume that we'll have the carnival back next year?
I'm hoping, but we'll see.
Because a lot of people missed that already, but I think you've done well and given me other things. And the other thing that she didn't mention. Which will show my bias is we've probably had at least about a hundred people or more per night at the the pickleball tournament, which is also part of.
So I have a couple of questions for you. I need to know who's going to be on the float. So the way we have this set up is we have the mayor in a car with your wife. Yeah, I think it is. I think it's about that age. And the gentleman that's taking you is very excited, so he was at the car. And so if council, if you are going to be on the float, you're more welcome to bring your spouse too. I just need to know so we, I I can make sure I've got placement for you. And then if you need a ride up to the staging area, you can meet me at the information booth at five. Five, don't not five in the morning, please. Ten, about ten fifteen ish, they can call me on the radio if I'm out doing something, but I can I can reach up in the corridor. Get some public works to help me with the car. We'll figure out how to get you up there. Or you can get dropped off up there, whatever, and we can get you back. We can drive you back, get your car. So whatever you want, just let me know. And if you're going to be on the float or not, and the other thing is is the car show. We have the mayor's choice, so I need you to pick out one and then chief, we have the chief twice again for the car show. So just pick one out and then just let Chuck know or James, either way.
So contact Chuck when I go over there.
Yeah, Jack, yeah, he's always over there. Just let him know what your choices and that will be great. And then we usually do, Ken Mortuary is my sponsor there. They usually do a choice and then we do the people's choice. So we usually do for award that hap- now the awards happen at five thirty, so if you want to be present for the warrants, you're more than welcome to be over there at five thirty. And then the only other thing is that the stage at eight o'clock for any any announcements that you'd like to make. And that's it.
That we want to make or you want us to make?
Yeah, 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 it's nice to have you make it. Sorry. Yes, it's very nice for you to make it and whatever.
Do we want the whole council there or?
Yeah, yeah, we usually do. We usually have you all up on the stage. Yeah, right, and then Charlie Jenkins starts at at eight thirty, so it's just right, right, right in there for for a few minutes.
Can you quickly tell us the entertainment that's that night?
So on on Saturday night, it starts off with at four PM Hawk Watch. It's a bird of prey show. So it's very, very, very cool. They're very excited to be here. For five fifteen, it's Hells Fumbling Music, so it's a it's a family that does that together. Six forty five, it's Learn to Line Dance with Eric Dodge. Eric is a fabulous singer. But he's going to do a little bit of singing, but mostly just teaching people, so right in front of the stage, we'll block it off. And I've already seen some people saying that they're going to be there on Facebook, so I've got some people already excited for that one. And then you guys are on eight and then Charlie Jenkins at eight thirty and. We are asking everyone, and this is something I need to talk to Lindsay a little bit more about. It's the first time ever, we're not providing seats for the the stage, so we're asking people to bring us blanket, bring your lawn chairs this year. You know, to bring your own chair this year, so we're.
Yeah, we had to really get the word out. Because a lot of the people my age and older will probably need their own chairs, because if you get down on the grass, you can't get up.
So, yeah, we're asking everybody to bring their own chair this year. Seating's not provided, so we'll we'll keep pushing that out.
Because people bring those chairs for the fireworks anyway.
They do, they do, and this year we're doing it a little bit different. So the stage is actually on, this is probably interesting to you, we're putting the stage on the south end. So the fireworks will go up right behind, so you won't have to, yeah. We're doing it a little bit different. We've wanted to do it this way for a while now.
We couldn't because of other.
Well, it it just, we thought since we're mixing it up with no no carnival, let's mix it up.
So you have the fireworks and you have the safe zone.
So you'll have the safe zone. They will be.
So we're in front of the safe zone.
Yeah, you'll be on this side of the safe zone. It'll be pushed out and 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 stuff, but.
That's that's even more reason to have the.
Just bring it, sit there, yeah, sit there, watch, watch the concert and then the fireworks will up right after the concert.
What's your attendance projection for that night, the fireworks?
Oh, we're going to be large.
Ten, fifteen?
Yeah, it's it's going to be a lot. It's going to be big with all the parks. It's I I I think the numbers are going up, so.
Okay, only because I've been involved in the very first one. How are we doing on floats? How's our float turn out?
Our floats are are great. We're, we've got all accountable. They're all coming from all the cities. Our parade numbers are coming up. I think we're about fifty now. Yeah, so it's it's not not bad. I always say if we can hit fifty, we'll have a good parade, so I think we're good. We just got a parade. The first. They're pulling it. She's going to pull it up for us. I just got it, this phone call right before here too. In the parade. And it is.
It's not flying, I assume.
No, the first one that is street legal, so it's a street.
Car plane, car plane.
Yeah, but it can fly too. Actually lives here in Cottonwood Heights and he, it's the first time he showed it and it's an older model. I think it's, it might be kind of kind of fun, but it's street legal. He's it's insured, it's ready to go, so I think that's kind of a. Yeah, he just put it, he just put it on and then, so anyway.
All right, Ann, Ann, thank you. I think everyone knows Ann's been here. How many years now you've been doing this?
This is, I've been here ten years. This would have been, last year would have been number eleven. This would have been twelve. I don't know.
Thank you. It was a wonderful job.
And I I can't let this go by. She just finished up with Matilda. And it was very well attended. Record breaking and they're still tearing stuff down and everything. I saw you last night. You were going back. But July must be a month that you're glad that it's over, but you you do an amazing job. Thank you so much.
It's it's all the planning is fun though. All the getting up to it is fun.
It's outstanding. I I remember, again, we need to move on. But I remember the very first Butlerville Days, putting up a few tents, a few events, a few activities and to watch it grow. I think the community is is well served. It's it's a great event and especially after last year of the pandemic. To bring people back together and to have that opportunity is just awesome, so thank you and please pass on my thanks to, that's my point, to the committee. Many have been there now. Years and years themselves. Today when I'm walking in again, it's been ten years later, so. They love it and they obviously love working with you, so thank you. Appreciate that. Go back to work. All right, open space master plan discussion, another one of my favorite topics. Open space. So Mike, you introduce.
I'm going to spend twenty seconds introducing it. We're really excited about this. We've been through an extensive process. Started kind of back with Matt Taylor and and left to get another job and Andy Holka, our current senior planner, has. Taken the torch from Matt and and got it across the finish line, so I'm going to just turn it over to him to to give you a rundown of. Where the plan has been and what it is and what it's proposing and just kind of an overview of everything.
All right, thanks, Mike. Well, happy to be here. This is a really exciting project to be working on. There's no flying cars, but. It is still pretty fun, so we, this actually has its roots in Butlerville Days, looking back to the public comment period. The first real public comment that we gathered officially for this was at twenty seventeen Butlerville Days. We set up a little booth with a map and had people draw on the map. It's evolved a lot since then, as Mike said, we've we've gone through staff, but I'm going to give you a brief overview. I'll try to keep it quick. I know we're running short on time. But I wanted to show, I pulled up on the screen, the city website. If you want to do a more in-depth look at the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan, it's available. It's available to the public if anyone wants to take a look. Navigate to the city website and then under city services, community development and then adopted and special plans. That's got, it's a good page, by the way. It has our information about our general plan update and all the other master plans. It's also where we've got links for the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan documents, so we've got. The full draft plan and documents. We've also created an interactive map to accompany the document. It's, and so I'll I'll just go through the, excuse me, the points on the map. It includes all of the main details and recommendations of the plan. But our GIS, our map specialist, Melissa Blue, helped put this together. It's really neat because you can zoom in right to your neighborhood and take a look at what's being proposed nearby. So I'll just go through real quick and touch on the main highlights and then happy to answer any questions you have, but it's. This is a master plan, so this is a long range vision for Parks Trails and Open Space in Cottonwood Heights. As I said, we've done extensive public feedback. We looked through all of the old master plans. The Y two analytics surveys that you're familiar with from twenty sixteen, I think twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. We did our own survey, two formal open houses. And then throughout the past year or so, we've been working very extensively with Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. And the Planning Commission, both groups recommended unanimous approval of the plan, so. We're very excited, got a lot of great feedback that's been included in the plan. The goals are, of course, to maintain, improve the existing Parks Trails and Open Space. To acquire additional open space, make plans for new parks, trail connections. And to create a connected network. This not only benefits our. Health and quality of life in the city, but also provides a financial benefit, actually increases property values to live near a park or a trail. Very desired, something that we've had a lot of support from the public on. To go over the maps, as I said, you can go through and click through this and take a look individually at all of the details, but. We've inventoried the existing open space. You'll see there's a legend. We've got points for all of the parks. We've also identified private open space, mostly like HOAs or apartment complex, open area. We've also identified, uh, private open space, mostly, uh, like HOAs or apartment complex, open areas. Public space and then semi-public includes the cemetery, golf courses, um, schools as well. Click through the plan.
When, when did, when did we get a golf?
Well, we don't, but we.
Oh, I thought you were announcing, I thought you were announcing something.
We've got a few things outside of the city just for connectivity reasons.
It's still in the service of the golf.
Right. Something that our residents may use. We've got Old Mill here. We, we also show Wheeler Farm, which is outside of the city boundaries. Um, but use this as a baseline to kind of identify what's available. We also asked what improvements or new amenities people would like to see in the city. And we've got a whole list. I won't go through everything, but, um, got some interesting ideas. Frisbee golf, stage for live music, community gardens, um, a whole bunch of interesting ideas. Suggestions people would like to see nearby. Moving on to the future open space, uh, a lot of points identified. Uh, I want to point out that this doesn't necessarily mean that we're calling for a park at each of these points on the map. Uh, for instance, we've got points called out throughout, uh, Fort Union Boulevard. The idea there was to call for open space amenities to be included as areas redeveloped. So to include, uh, plaza or pedestrian walkway or some other form of open space that should be enjoyed by the public. Even if it's not a full park. We're calling for, uh, open space, like I said, along the major Fort Union corridor. Several points at the gravel pit, the old mill, as those are developed or redeveloped in the future. To include additional open space amenities. Got the Dover Hill Open Space. We zoom in. Showing that Ferguson Canyon Trailhead, all called as future open space options. And then of course, uh, you know, one of the comments that we have from the public is to. Try to preserve natural open space as well in addition to our formal parks. And so we've called out. The foothills of the city for future preservation as possible. Moving on to trails, um, we've got an existing trails map. I'll zoom in a little bit. We had a lot of input from people. You'll notice little neighborhood connections and trails kind of. Got the connections at the, uh, the rec center through several neighborhoods. That was all from public comment. And then of course our existing natural trails. So, um, on this map, green is indicates a natural trail. Usually unpaved dirt path and then orange is an urban trail, something typically that's paved. So we have our big Cottonwood Canyon Trail and Cotton, Cotton and Corporate Center, our East Jordan Canal Trail. And then for the natural trails, Crestwood Park and Ferguson Canyon. Um, you can see we, we've got some great trails, but not a lot of connectivity. So one of the main goals of the plan was to. Think of ways that we can connect the existing trails and parks. So as we go to the future trails map. You'll see there, there's a lot on this. So I, I won't go through all of it. But again, as with the last map, orange represents urban trails. This could include a, you know, a mixed use pathway. Or we've got Fort Union marked on this map in accordance with our Fort Union plan. We're calling for bike paths on either side of the. The road. You're also familiar with the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Plan and that's been included, but in addition to those that you're aware of, there are also some new ideas. Um, we've got a trail, uh, the little cottonwood trail with various alignment options following the creek. Uh, from really the base of the canyon all the way through the city up to Wheeler Farm and Murray potentially. Also got an idea that was suggested is to put a trail along the freeway along I two fifteen similar to. Harley's on I eighty, which is a really interesting opportunity that we have in the city. Um, and a suggestion from the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee was to create a loop. And so we had one of our committee members draw out a loop that, uh, wraps all the way around from Big Cottonwood Canyon. Through the corporate center, along the freeway to Mount View Park and then up kind of through to Crestwood. And then up the hill and to Bengal past, uh, City Hall. Following kind of the five K route to Bi Water Park and then around to Fort Union. Um, really interesting idea. Be, uh, a great recreational option for people to be able to. Experience the city, visit several different parks and commercial centers. So there's a lot of cool, exciting ideas here. And, uh, and we can go through this more in depth.
Well, not even important to mention is apparent tonight with the Wasatch Boulevard Trail, which is part of the master plan.
Correct. Yes, we've got a trail called for on Wasatch Boulevard the entire way. Um, and then just one more quick thing to show, uh, that an idea that was included with this plan was planning areas. Uh, with the help of the historic committee, we kind of created these planning areas as a way to look at. Different neighborhoods in the city to identify gaps in service. To make sure that everyone has access to high quality parks, trails and open space amenities. So we won't go through each of these, but, um, you can click through or just scroll to your area. You can zoom in and out to, to find your neighborhood and take a look at what's being posed or what's existing. Um, but we've got, you know, just looking at the Brighton area, you can see the open space. At Brighton, at the rec center, you can see our, uh, our Cottonwood Heights loop cut through here. And you can see what's nearby. So kind of fun when you have some time to maybe look around and. And see this is a way, this has everything on all of the maps that we've looked at so far. Um, I'll, I'll probably stop there. We've got information on implementation, funding sources, things like that. And as well for people who may be listening or if, if you're interested in looking, there, there's a way to submit comments on our interactive map as well. So something that we're, we're really excited about, uh. Looking forward to being here and, uh, happy to answer the questions that you have.
This is really cool.
I'm excited about this. I have, have a couple of questions. Um, where does it go here as far as timing and adoption?
Well, I, I think the idea is to gather feedback from the council tonight and then take it back. Incorporate any suggestions or changes and just bring it back hopefully soon for.
So we're, we're looking at in the fall, September. Yeah, this has been through Planning Commission, formal hearings, then through Open Space Committee. This is, yeah, it's, it's complete and, and we feel ready to go.
The second, second question, which I think is very unique to our municipality on Lightmost. Is that we have two other entities that are heavily involved in open space in our city, one being the county. And two being the service area. So I understand, I would assume that there's been dialogue with them to incorporate what we're doing with. Their planning and thinking, because we don't want to.
Yes. So, so, so Ben Hill's on the open space committee. He's been actively involved and given us great feedback. Uh, and, and we took a lot of county level master plan recommendations and made sure.
Who did that?
I turned it on when I first sat down. So.
It was on.
But anyway, but anyway, my point not to, just, just add some strength to your position. To identify that we have goals to increase in areas because to nationally accepted standards. Were deficient or, or below. I think it really helps in the future when we're gone, a document, this living document to advocate. Going forward. And, and there's, there's a lot of ways you could do that. It doesn't have to dominate, but yeah.
I think, um, Mayor Madden Hall did that homework already. I saw a presentation at one of the league conferences. And it did show Cottonwood Heights pretty deficient. So if we want to just borrow that research, I think she already did it.
I'll, I'll take a look. I know we've got some and that's great feedback. I'll make sure.
Pretty general and, and again, you, you mitigate part of the standard based upon the excellent mountains.
Yeah.
You have to take that into account, but still there are areas where we're so deficient that we need to need a document that deficiency. So we can advocate to make sure any opportunity we, cause like when it comes to funding and things like that, you can say, look, it's not just. Just because Andy wants it here. Look.
Right.
Here's the standard. We appreciate Andy, but here's the standard that.
And it's the highest priority in our last couple of surveys.
It always has been, yeah, yeah. But Annie, thank you. This, this is fabulous and appreciate your efforts. And Taylor from Matt and Mike and, uh, and Park Trail Place Committee because they're, they're in their fourth year, I guess. And, uh, that's great progress effort and, uh, it's, it's important. Yeah. Questions of the council further, I guess, more feedback and.
I think we would, we, we can send you links to this information. We would just request that you, you come through. And the interactive map really is a, a great new way to, to look through master plans in a. Yeah. So yeah, any feedback you have would be great. Send them to us and we'll, we'll come back.
I need to go through, I presume it was just glance at it, but yeah. Outstanding. Thank you. Right. Thank you. And we'll give you feedback and we'll bring it back and.
It'll be coming most likely in the fall, September.
Yeah.
Well, it's scheduled.
All right, uh, that's the, uh. We just have this, as far as the calendaring items, we have a couple of items coming up, uh. Of course, Matilda is over with, I think it was on the day. And, uh, we have Butlerville Days, we talked about that. So that's the only. Business or not business, but work session agenda items, other than we need to move into a closed session. To deal with the real estate issue. So, um. We need somebody who would make the motion to close the work session. And open a closed session for the purpose of discussing real estate.
So moved, man.
The move by Councilor Bruce, do I have a second?
I'll second.
The movement seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no one's opposed. Assuming Christine's in favor, so we are unanimous.
She just gave a thumbs up.
All right. Thank you.